To my place.
One of the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first off, I'd like to get approval for the agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
All right. Prove the minutes of July twenty first, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
Second. Second. Aight.
Prove employee claims down county auditor for one thousand twenty six dollars and three cents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Improve playing style of county auditor for one hundred and nine three thousand five hundred fifty two dollars and ten cents.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
In favor?
First.
Uh, prove the resignation of Chuck Mazer, Sundar County or Sundar Township trustee.
I would approve that resignation.
So.
All in favor?
Aight.
All right. Now approves the appointment of Chuck Mazer to Sundar Township clerk.
Same.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
So with that being said, you guys will need to find another trustee to serve in Sundar Township. Replace Chuck. He's been a trustee for many, many years. So we're fortunate that he stepped. Possession.
Okay.
Do you want to volunteer to do that?
I didn't have very good luck finding that. But anybody else got any ideas?
I can do some research and get back with you.
Thank you.
I'll keep my eyes out too, but.
Sometimes in the past, what we've done is gone through the playbook.
That's what I was gonna do.
And look around and see who's in the area and start reaching out from there.
It's several good candidates. Okay, next, uh. Prove the tobacco permit for Dollar General store twenty nine, six eighty eight, Hudson Fairbank.
I will make the motion to prove that tobacco permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
All right. Next, approve the hiring of Abby Davidson, part time dispatcher, Sheriff's Office, twenty one forty four per hour, in accordance of the union contract.
You have anything to add?
Nope, she's starting today. Came down, she's doing HR's things this afternoon. Um, one of these next board meetings, I'll bring it over and introduce you. Today just wasn't a good, good day.
Right. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Yep.
All in favor?
Aight.
Through the disalliance of military and homestead credit notices. Plus was in our packet. Uh, most majority, these are all people that have moved and no longer qualify based on where they've moved to.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
All right. Thank you.
There will be letters sent out. Those are all prepared and I'll just. Sign them as we've done in the past on behalf of the board of supervisors, so everyone will get a notice.
Next, we have approved the resignation of Judy Olson from the Pioneer Senate Jury Commission, effective July twenty first, twenty twenty five.
That's, she's gonna leave a hole. Um, yeah, I'll make the motion to approve this resignation.
Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
And then once again, uh, replacement will need to be found for that. And maybe there's someone on the commission that may have some ideas. I don't know.
That's an interesting commission because they've got, what do they have seventeen volunteers and materials that can. They, they are in charge of maintaining, so. Great team of people that volunteered for that. Next on the agenda, approve fireworks permit for Mark Murphill.
Everything seems to be in order. The permit was in your packet.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Favor?
Aight.
Is, all right, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um.
That's it.
Once it's approved, will that get sent to us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I think it's well winded.
We'll send the copy to Mary.
Okay, perfect. We'll get him on.
Yeah.
No, you sort of just go ahead and shoot him off. I got a nine oh five. We're good.
Okay. Uh, we're going to meet with, uh, Alos and Cooney representing regarding board and government's resolution for approval. And, uh.
Well, I know, but did you want to come up?
This is, uh, Mike Galloway, who represents us for HR issues, uh, at the county level for us. We need assistance, so.
And Sean, if you could come up, because if you do have something to add, then.
We can hear you.
Because otherwise it's a problem to pick it up from here's a battle very well. Sorry.
I'll come by Jason.
Yeah.
It's not right, but or if you're.
You want me to go ahead, John?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, thank you, everybody. Thanks for, uh, the board for having me. I'm Mike Galloway. I'm with Allers. Um, I talked to you guys a lot on the phone. I just met Ashley for the first time in actual person, and I've never shot a person that I've talked on the phone. Um, I represent or probably half the counties in the state. Um, we were trying to go through the numbers the other day, but a lot of it is and the majority of it is vibrant employment things as well as any kind of general governance. And from time to time, we get these kind of board governance issues that pop up. Actually, it's kind of unique. I'm doing a presentation for another board. Later this week up in this area on board governance issues. And so in discussing with Sean, I, I understand there's been some little bumps that are going on and. And issues and concerns about how we manage and how the board's role is with the other elected officials. As I always say, county government is very, very unique as it relates to any government. Structure in the state, right? We have elected officials that all have, uh, autonomous authority, also have. Pointed boards or independent boards that have autonomous abilities to do things that, and the board's role and the general public doesn't often understand is. You guys are more policy budget setting and then managing of your departments that report directly to you, whether it's HR, county, uh, secondary roads. Sometimes, uh, you have other maintenance, IT, things like that. But generally speaking, the vast majority of the employees and the functions are, um. Sent out to each one of the elected officials to, to manage their, their group. So. When we come through that, as I said, I understood there's some issues. So one of the things we do is we try to put a resolution together when we hit one of these bumps. That just kind of helps define everybody's roles and how information should flow, because there is a lot of information and. And the board has access to a lot of information, but the problem is, is that's a lot of times confidential information, and it also puts a burden on your various elected officials and departments. As to how to respond and is this a, a, a board requested information that they need to perform their statutory duties, or is it just information that they would be gleaning? Because the, the, the member of the public or any other person in the public would do. So. What we've tried to do in this resolution, like I said, it's not inconsistent with a lot of places, is put some guardrails out, right, to help everybody. Kind of remember that we have our individual lanes, whether it's our elected official lanes or our board lanes and all of those or departmental lanes. And, and to help, uh, do that. One of the other things that's a big issue and you'll see that in here, right, is. The management of the department heads that do report to the board and how do we do time off or how do we do counseling issues? Because lots of times. It's, uh, something needs to be addressed immediately and you're meeting once a week, right? And so we, uh, give the chair that responsibility to approve time off if there's some minor corrections. That need to happen, we try to do that. And obviously the board selects their chair, right? So it's going to be somebody that you trust in those roles. Now, what we also do is restrict that. From taking any big actions against anybody, um, which, uh, also, uh, keeps the check and balance in, in place. And finally, the information request, right? The board needs information to do their job. There's absolutely no doubt about that. But there's clearly what you need as a board, and I, I, as I stress to all my boards. You act as a group. You don't act as individuals, and that's where confusion gets. And then we start getting, uh, bumps in the road and we start getting problems to occur. So. I think what this does is efficiently, because you do meet every week, right? You can, as you need information for the board to make decisions, um, request that as a board and say to the auditor, hey, we need this or from Sean, we need this or from HR, we need this. Please provide that in the board. You can put something as a standing on your agenda, like, is there any information that we need? And then you take a vote on motion. Have whoever it is, whether it's the sheriff or whoever, provide that information or HR, provide that information. That way. Also, the communication's very clear, like what do we really need and what are we requesting? And I always. Pick on the auditors because they're always the ones that have to provide the information, right, typically. You know. You know, you know. But that's why we, it, it typically so that we can have clarification as to what we need. So. What this tries to do, and I think it does pretty well. No pride in authorship, if it needs to be corrected, by the way. Um, it is that. It gets that into a process and a procedure that makes it clear and everybody's on the same page as how we are going to move forward. And once you get into the rhythm, it'll probably be a lot easier and a lot less. Procedural in nature, I would say, but give it some time so that everybody knows. So. I'll quit talking. I'll get off my soapbox and answer any questions.
That's a great step in the right direction. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Questions?
I don't have any questions. I think it's very well written.
Have a chance to read through it.
Did you want to read through it for the public, Sean? I'm not sure where, where you're at with this.
I can.
It will be in the minutes.
I don't know. Start the. Or to again.
I always get stuck with that.
Yeah, I get, I get stuck with. Whereas, Bucana County Board of Supervisors wishes to implement a more efficient and transparent process. To address board governance and oversight issues and whereas pursuant to Iowa Code three thirty one, twenty three oh one. Counties may exercise any power and perform any function. To protect and preserve the rights, privileges and can, and property of the county or its residents. Not inconsistent with state law. And whereas pursuant to Iowa Code three thirty one dash or point three twenty one. Um. Sure, let's see what, whatever.
And the following.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm not. And related provisions, Bucana County Board of Supervisors. Has authority over certain county officers and employees. Including without limitation, the responsibility to appoint, direct and manage employees. That directly report to it and in the interest of more efficient administering functions as a board. Desires to clarify the roles of individual board members in the management of those of these employees. And whereas the Bucana County Board of Supervisors has a statutory duty to oversee the financial. And in administrative functions of the county as set forth in Iowa Code three thirty one, four oh. And other relevant sections of chapter three thirty one. And in executing those duties, the board must have access to information from various sources within the county. And whereas it has come to the attention of the board supervisors that a process needs to be implemented, but the board. Request information from department heads and elected officials in support of executing its statutory functions. So as not to unduly burden or expose the department heads. And elected officials to potential liability in attempting to comply with information requests by individual members of the board. Now therefore, it be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Bucana County, State of Iowa. One, the chairperson of the board shall have the authority to direct the daily operations and administrative supervision of employees. That report to the Board of Supervisors, consistent with applicable county policies and applicable state law. The chairperson, and number two, now the chairperson of the board shall be responsible for approving paid leaves of absences for employees. That report to the board, consistent with applicable county personnel policies. Number three, the chairperson of the board shall have the authority to investigate allegations of misconduct. And ensure corrective actions to employees that report directly to the Board of Supervisors. However, the chairperson may not terminate an employee unless approved by a majority full of the board in the accordance. With the provision of Iowa Code, chapter twenty one. Number four, requests by the Board of Supervisors for information from county department heads or elected officials. Shall be made by action of the full board during a regularly scheduled meeting. Such requests must be placed on the agenda in advance pursuant to Iowa Code twenty one point four, number one. And approved by motion. The board through its action on the request shall determine whether the information is necessary. For the performance of its statutory duties under Iowa Code, chapter three thirty one. The board recognizes that some. Information requested may be confidential or privileged under Iowa Code, chapter two, or other provisions of law. And agrees to handle such information in this manner consistent. With applicable law, including any statutory exemptions, privacy protections or confidentiality requirements. In the, number five, individual members of the Board of Supervisors may request. Access to public records in their individual capacity under Iowa Code, chapter twenty two. Subject to the same procedures and fees as members of the public. Nothing in this resolution shall be construed to limit a board member's rights as a citizen or as an elected official under applicable law. Number six, this resolution shall become effective upon adoption by a majority of the board supervisors. And shall remain in effect unless amended or repealed past this day, twenty first day of July, twenty twenty five. So, any questions, comments, concerns?
I'll make the, the motion that we adopt this resolution.
Forget it. I'll call.
Yes, please.
Third side.
We even die.
Local line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work. Thank you, Mike.
Let me know. Folks simply have questions, concerns as they come up.
Will do.
On any comments or discussion or anything. Sure.
I'll stand. I'll get out of here. Yep.
Thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate the help.
Thank you.
Take care.
Nice to meet you.
I'm good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, same.
Okay, next on the agenda, approve the handbook amendment. Ashley, your background is correct.
Back, yep. So we have our new handbook that approved, was it last week, the week before, um, that will be effective August first, um. So grateful I had an employee reach out after we sent everything out. Um, there was a section missed. It's called the floating holiday. Which went into effect July one of twenty sixteen. So there was an amendment out there when we had, well, it's still the current handbook. Um, so glad we caught that. So I just wrote up a, um, resul, or an amendment for you guys to. Approve today to be effective August first, same as the new handbook. Um, the process of the floating holidays does not change either. So all the information is the same. The process is the same. For what's been happening the last ten years. We're, yep, we're just getting it back into that, um, new handbook and then probably next year, um, when I, when we go through again, just make sure everything's still compliant and up to date. I'll stick that back in there so then we don't have to have another piece of paper along with the handbook. So. We'll stick that back in there next year, probably.
After Ashley brought this to our attention, I did a little research and it looks like, um, May ninth of two thousand sixteen is when it was. The, um, voting holiday was approved by the board. And so at, the handbook was approved January first. So that whole amendment never was in there and it was just something the commission didn't catch and for our committee. And like Ashley said, very fortunate that we had an employee. Catch it, so we can get it fixed right away.
Yep, it's completely overlooked, but again, as Chris said, very grateful that that employee reached out because now we're still on track. Everything will be rolled out August first, so.
It's really a testament that, that folks are not shy about reaching out to you.
Exactly. And that's why, yeah, I've told everyone, if you have any questions, reach out and I'm, yeah, very grateful. So nothing is missed and. The rollout date and all the information will be on August first, so.
Sure.
Exactly. A good learning lesson. I'll never forget a floating holiday.
You know why?
Every handbook, that'll be mentioned, no matter what.
So with that, I need a, uh, motion to approve the handbook amendment.
Seven. Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
All right. Moving on, items for discussion. Place on file the filing maneuver management plans. Heckholm, Madison Township, section thirty two. Seven Braden's one LLC, Middlefield Township. Section twelve. Smith Hill Site number one, Fremont Township. Action thirty five. CNC egg Byron Township, section thirty one. Porkchop Ranch, Sundar Township, section twenty seven. He has motion to place those on file.
Same.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
All right. Okay, next, review salary adjustments for the IT director. This was a, uh. Point of confusion. We had, uh, discussed Jason's. Salary increase. Which was originally best spent for three percent and through discussion and negotiation, the budget time, we did approve four percent. And however, somehow it never translated to the payroll department. So he's still locked in at three. And rather than taking the two, we're gonna take it back.
Yeah, that was one of those things. Um. I had three on our budget workshop, on my workshop, our pink sheets. And we went through and did all the updates. The wages were approved here the first part of July. Uh, the worksheets all went out after the budget was approved and it was just never caught. So when Dawn brought it to our attention. I just told her, I said, this is what I have. Any changes that needs to come before the Board of Supervisors for them to make a decision.
John, I want to thank you for taking very detailed notes. I had to look back through my budget book and I had ripped the sheet out because we had changed it.
Yeah. Yeah, like you said, I found four percent later and I apologize for all this stuff. It's something we all know.
So without any further discussion, I would like a, um, motion to re, approve the four percent adjustment to. The G directors salary.
Do we need to do it? Include that in the, um.
And I guess we'd have to pay the back pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to go back and figure one percent from January first.
Yeah.
Through the last payroll and then four percent going forward.
I'll make that motion to include the pay raised to four percent and then the back pay, obviously the four percent.
January percent.
Yeah, July first, July.
First.
And June.
You gotta jam on.
Okay. Like a January.
Yeah, I didn't say what you do.
Johnson's two, I say five.
I know I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight. Okay.
Thanks.
Updates for boards and commission. Something Keith reached out about, and this is something I've been tossing around in my mind. So. Uh, to many of you may not know. Uh, each of us serve on approximately thirteen different boards and commissions in addition to our supervisor. Responsibilities at the county. Um. We serve as members of these boards and commissions to. Uh, be voting members and also participants in direction of a lot of these different organizations. Um. Aside from us attending those every month or every quarter or whenever they meet. Nobody knows exactly what all we talk about or anything else. And I think it, it's very beneficial that. Um, at least. We give a brief update. I think at every board meeting. Which would not clog us up too bad if we did it every week. Um. As a brief update during our discussion periods. With, uh, what we have been involved in with whatever organization it is.
Question. Yeah, a good example, it's a water trails conversation where mixed, uh, transportation on my side and the, the water resources on your side. So. Um, seems like the more that we talk about this stuff, the better it be. I mean, there's some, there's some items that obviously I would trust you guys. If there's resources available to Bucano County. You're gonna go after them. That, that makes sense. I'd like to see you empowered to do that. But there's other things like, uh, Northeast Iowa workforce development, uh, that merger next week, we, we need to talk about and make sure that we're all on the same page for that vote. So. You'd like the right thing to do.
I understand what you're saying. Um, there are some boards and commissions that I serve on that have delicate information that it should not be. Put in the public. Always.
Fair enough.
Um. And when we serve on those boards and commissions, we are empowered to go ahead and make those decisions.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, and by no means am I encouraging the release of privileged or confidential information, but. A summary of some of the things that we've been working on, I think if there's nothing wrong with that, and I think it'd be informed to the public also. Cause I don't think they realize all the. Different activities that we're involved in.
Right.
If you thought the board needed to prove, to approve some sort of confidential, we could obviously go in closed session and add that, but. Obviously, you're empowered to take that call.
You know, it's not happening.
So can I have a motion? We add that to our, uh, weekly agendas?
I would also like to have our secretary's take on this. How much does this can add to your minutes, Chris?
They're mine. They're your minutes.
Yeah, I know, but you know, the ones having them.
Basically, I guess it's gonna have to depend, depend on what type of detail. That needs in there, but if you're just doing a brief summary that you went to this meeting, that many this. It's not, it's gonna be add to it. Yeah, one hundred percent, but. Is it gonna be that big of a deal? No, I don't believe so. And then I'll honestly, shortly after I took office, this is something that I asked the board to do. So the public did realize how many meetings you guys go to and attend. So I think just a brief weekly update is perfectly fine.
I'm not wanting for a capital meeting. I want a, just a brief summary of some of the issues and. We can have discussions at a later time if there's more in depth that we need to go. I don't see. I don't want overburdened. The note taking on it or minutes or anything else.
No paragraphs for me?
Bulletproof.
So probably what I would do is just, um, before public comments on our agenda, just put board comments.
Thank you.
And just leave it a standing agenda item.
You can make a motion for exposure.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to add. Boards and commissions, comments from. Meeting.
First.
All in favor?
Aight.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we got Ashley back up again. Discuss EAP team building.
Yeah.
And I guess we're thought might as well explain what EAP stands for.
EAP is our employee assistance program. Um, we have a local one through Allen Occupational Health. Um, there's telehealth options and going in person, so a little closer, a little bit more local. And then we also have EAP through our life insurance. Um, that was just a free addition with our life insurance, but we, um, utilize both, but we really utilize the more local one. Um. We've had them for, I'm not sure, we've had them for quite a few years. Um, so today I, I have information I'll be referring to here. Um, I was able to speak with our. Employee Assistance, uh, Program, a provider there is Amanda. So, um, over the past several months, there's been feedback given from Bucano County employees and members of the public regarding concerns related to the current dynamics within our board. I received nearly seventy complaints just directed towards me. I know that there's been several other complaints. From both employees and members of the public since January one. With addition of a new board member. Many of the comments have shared, um, have expressed disappointment, frustration and a desire to see our leadership model, the professionalism. And cooperation that our community expects and deserves. Based on those conversations, it was suggested that the three of you participate in a team building session. I know that's been brought up, uh, quite a few times here in the board meetings. Um, in response to this suggestion, I reached out to our employee assistance program, uh, EAP. To explore the most appropriate and effective way to proceed with this. So after discussing the situation and the nature of the current board, um, our EAP provider strongly recommended that rather than a team building session. At this point, she doesn't feel that would be beneficial at all. Um, each of you participate in individual coaching sessions. So the intent here is to provide a confidential constructive space to reflect. Address challenges and develop tools for working together and moving forward from everything that has occurred. The proposal includes three individual coaching sessions, one for the each of you, like I said, um, at a rate of a hundred and eleven per hour. So, uh, it is recommended by her that each session be at least three hours in length totaling three hundred and thirty three per board member. Uh, sessions can be conducted either in person or virtually, and then we can determine the appropriate, uh, length, the session length, based on what works best with our budget. Um. I originally. What works best with our budget. Um, I originally thought it was just one hour, so just three third, three hundred and thirty-three total. Um, but she does recommend for it to be beneficial that they're up, they are at least three hours long, but again, we can determine that. At some other point.
Three hours continuous or three hour, three one-hour sessions or?
So it would be three, three hour sessions, so one for you confidential with EAP. For three hours, whatever works best with our scheduling and then Keith, three hours, that one session, Dawn. Three hours for that one session, but again, if we don't. Feel that three hours, I mean, she's the expert, she's um, she recommends three hours. Would be the most beneficial, however. With. Rates and costs, you know, with our budget, we can determine, okay, maybe we do one hour, but with that, I mean, one hour really isn't that long, right? Maybe we need a couple hours, but you know, that's. Less than the three hours, so again, that's something that we can discuss there. Like I said, these sessions would be provided by EAP and are designed to help each of you process what has been occurring since January one with everything that's been going on in the county. And begin the important work of moving forward as a cohesive board. Uh, with all of this said, I just want to be clear, this is not a request, this is a need. Uh, we are at a critical point and healing cannot begin without action. I say this with a heavy heart, but also with hope, I am disappointed by where we currently stand. Not just as a board, but as a county. However, I believe that taking this first step, we show a commitment not just to ourselves, but to the employees and citizens that we serve. Um, will these three sessions solve every issue? Of course not. But they will help each of you reflect, refocus and recommit to a shared agenda. That prioritizes the betterment of Buchanan County as a whole. So if the board agrees, participate today, I will follow up with each of you individually and we can coordinate schedules and provide more detailed information. Um, again, at the very least, participating in these sessions uh shows our willingness to try as a board and to do better. Because we all know where we stand right now isn't the best and we need to step up and try to be better and do better, so. Um. Again, if you guys have any questions, I mean, we can discuss that now or what you're thinking for how long of sessions or if you'd even be willing to participate. But I believe that all three of you should participate.
I believe these happen within the week. Have we, we just had like a Friday deadline.
Oh. She have availability by Friday?
I will, um, she's in aware that I am talking to you three today and then I was gonna follow up with her today, she said again. Um, it's really kind of um. In our ballpark right now, we just tell her when and she can make that work again virtually or in person. Um, and this is confidential after you, you know, if you guys choose to do this, she's not gonna come to me and share this information. This is simply for you three. To process everything and to do better and to work together, work together as a board.
At the same point in time, I do think that it's important for you and for our personnel workers to know that we did complete.
Yes, yes, that will um definitely be shared. Of you know, when you're going to be doing if and when you do these sessions and how long. And if you, yeah, if you attended, that would definitely be shared.
Actually, when you and I first talked about this. I suggested adding Chris into this also where she could. Have the same. Uh, opportunity.
Yep.
Uh, simply because she deals with us every week.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, and um, that is definitely.
That's kind of Chris.
I mean, I knew this was in the making with you three, I didn't.
Well, we else.
I can.
We discussed it.
I can sit down and visit with Ashley about it, I don't have problem with that.
Yeah, and then we can uh yeah, discuss and move forward and then. For how long the session, I mean, what are, what are your guys' thoughts with this? I know I just kind of threw a lot at you, but. It's definitely a need with our county right now.
This is, this is a great idea, go ahead.
Like I, I just wanted to. I didn't know where everybody was gonna be at with the thought of this, I wanted to. Support. Here for what Ashley's saying about the. This is a definite need at this point. Um, I've. Individually, I've sent you all emails um. Discussing. What I see going on. And. You know, several weeks ago was the the first time I had attended a board meeting this. Calendar year and. The. Lack of. Teamwork and hostility um. Was palpable in the room. And and you know, there was planning and zoning. Commission members here um at that point. And uh. It's not a good look. As far as the public goes, but what's happening internally. You know, I. I often will walk into my office and I have a staff member about showing me what. One person or another has said about another um outside of the boardroom and. What? What happens here in front of the public? Not only. Affects public and how the board's perceived externally, but it's having a great um. Significant impact on the employees of the county.
And their daily lives too outside of the county, I mean, how many people are asking? Employees about, you know, what's going on here? And they have the right to know, our citizens of course do, but something, there just needs to be a change for sure.
Yeah.
Well, understood.
But this is a great idea, not to detract from that, but uh Meet Me on Main has invited all three of us supervisors to participate in the drunk uh dump tank. So I assume this is.
I bet you'd raise a lot of money.
I bet. This is a great idea.
I'll be donating a lot.
So uh, yeah, I obviously I think this is a great idea, it's obviously needed.
Yeah, for sure. Perfect.
Can I just clarify that I'm off the hook now for the dump tank? I'll give you a dump bug too.
Yeah, any comments, questions?
I would make a motion that we will do this training and that it be completed by the end of the week. Um, sessions as needed as far as time link, I think that needs to be determined by the people on the other end, not necessarily our.
So it. It would be that uh three hours then.
Do you want to make it subject to the availability or?
Maybe let's, yeah.
Flexibility.
I think it's very time sensitive, this needs to be done and I'll, I'll explain that with um Amanda and see if she can pop over here or jump on a call. Um, with you guys. I mean, do you guys have a preference on a call virtual or in person?
In person.
In person?
Yes.
In person, okay. All right, I will contact Amanda today, um stating that you all three like to do in person, is everyone good with the three hours? Dawn stated that's.
Sure.
I mean, I believe you should do the three hours, if it was my decision, yes, three hours for sure.
I think for it to be.
Okay.
I would. I know you wanted to get it done in a hurry. But. Can we extend this up to next Friday? At this Friday, because I just, I just questioned whether we can make all these wheels turn that quickly.
Yeah.
Without.
Yep.
Essentially, you're talking about. Nine hours of their time too, right?
Yeah, right, exactly. Yeah, if they're willing to come in person, be here all day, I mean, they're very willing, very great, they've been super great to work with, but. Um, today, yeah, if you guys all agree, I'll jump on that call right away and um get some things scheduled.
They might like Buchanan County to say.
Yeah, exactly, it's a great place. Um, but yeah, I will probably first check her availability to see if she'd want to do back to back, you know, all of the same day. Um, but we can definitely look into that and then I'll reach out. And let you guys know about schedules.
I, I choose to keep it the way it is. I can, you know, I mean, some things, sometimes you just have to go with what's most important. When we have scheduling conflicts and I think this is very important.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay, by the way.
Yeah. I think, yeah, it'd be very beneficial to get it done this week, but you know, they may be subject to change if she, you know, cannot. They do that this week, but um, yeah, the next available for sure.
Still. Based on the.
EAP's availability, yeah, yep. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate all your work on that.
Of course.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah.
Next, meet with driven Nikki Public Health Director regarding the new waste budget.
I printed mine, did you? Okay. Okay, so you all approved the fiscal year twenty-sixty budgets. June second. Um, we've had a few other proposals come through. Um, and then we had our opioid settlement funds committee meeting. Thursday of last week. So um, just a budget amendment for. Um, when I presented in June, I had put the seven thousand dollars in that line item two for the two good pro. Too good for drugs programming in Buchanan County. Um. So I had just used last year's and moved it over. Um, I had then gotten the proposal from Pathways Behavioral Services, which is your. Um, though your first sheet that they would like to add in fifth and seventh grade on top of second grade. Um, with the two good for drug program. There is a curriculum kit that is a one-time purchase, so we would need to purchase that for fifth and seventh and then workbooks are something that the evidence-based program. Requires, so then the workbooks would also be an additional cost. Um, the kits would just be that one-time cost for this year to start the fifth and seventh graders and then workbooks would be a continuing cost. Um, I, here I have a message, Vicky or Teresa could not attend this morning. Um. So. While the, so the increase in funding, they're requesting. Um, in total, so we had seven thousand, they're requesting in total the fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-one. I had put seventeen thousand in the budget just to have a little wiggle room for mileage or um pathways to always does the cost of living raised in January. Um, and I, I didn't talk to Teresa, maybe she, she might have already, you know, put that in there, but I had just budgeted just that little more just in case. Um. Just prevention funds with the new behavioral health redesign are still being planned with the state. Funding through the opioid settlement funds would ensure no gaps in preventive programming. Within Buchanan County school, so that is why they would like to increase it. We did second graders this past school year. Um, would like to ensure that more um grades would be completing that. Um, last school year, aside from second graders. That the opioid settlement funds covered. Um, life skills, which is another, another evidence-based curriculum, independence did that in third through seventh graders. Jessup did fifth and eighth graders and East Buchanan did fourth graders. So they're just. Having um. It's just some things with the mental health, the mental health, behavioral health realignment, that's kind of um, it's not clear for this year yet, so they just want to ensure.
Just to say like that the. Committee meeting and. With. The issues that there are, especially at that age. They're getting ready to go into middle school and. Goodness knows what they're gonna be exposed to, so. Uh, whatever emphasis we can assist with in those. Tender ages for the fifth and sixth or fifth and seventh grade, I think would uh. Do a lot. We just got another. Announcement of a further opioid settlement, so we do have additional ones coming, so. I think this is a a key thing that we should take advantage of.
And those fifth and seventh grade were specifically planned, they weren't just, you know, pulling, um, and yeah, you brought me to the budget, so as of July twenty-first, there was a hundred and fifty-three. Thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-two cents in the balance, our requested budget was sixty-eight thousand and then then. Amended budget that I'm proposing would be seventy-eight thousand, so we are still well within what we already have in the account. Plus we randomly get. Money in, so.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Is there any way to include St. John's and St. Nate? And in the parochial grade schools we might have.
Um, we, we, I can ask, last year they were not included because of pathway staffing. They just didn't know if they could fit, it's ten lessons and they are need are, it's recommended for them to be done. Weekly, so it was more of a scheduling thing. Um, I could have Teresa and Vicky look into adding those in and see, because there'd be only be one section. Of each. Class, um, I could definitely ask and ask the principals if they would be interested in that too for second grade, um. It would, we already have the kit, well, I guess we'd have the kit for all of them, so it would just be staffed. If we added St. Nate's and St. John's for sure. Um, and then the the other program is like that life skills program I was talking about, it's not that. Won't be done, they just don't have their work planned from the state yet and it's. You know, end of July and we start, you know, I used to work for Pathway, so we usually start scheduling in the next couple of weeks and. So this is. Ensuring that we would have those in the school and then possibly adding more, but I can ask if they would. Add another section and. Mileage would be.
Unfortunately, any of these programs that are supported and funded by the state are all. I think a question much. What the status is, direction is. And it's uh. Affecting every agency that you deal with. So thank you for that and uh, I guess.
Make a motion to amend the budget.
Is this, is the seventeen, okay, I I did round up a little bit, okay, thank you. And I will.
Alright, thank you.
I can look into those and I might. Be back to Amanda again.
It's a creamer.
Am I good just standing here?
Well, I don't know if we can hear you.
Oh, well, good morning, and basically what's going on is the USGS has determined that Iowa has a strong potential. Of having large deposits of. Of hydrogen. And so they, and I thought I was hearing rumors of already some being found. I know they've been working up power counting across, well, there's a company based out of England and the gentleman that was working with it, they met with us and. Grew up in France. And um, they're wanting to come across the state. I shouldn't say the state, it's about four counties, they're calling it the Fayette Project, in this case it was Brimmer County, Blackhawk County, Fayette County, Buchanan County, Clayton County. And do seismic tests. Now, basically what they would do is they'd have this truck, they'd set out sensors, they'd have this truck and it would, you know, thump the ground. And pick up readings around. And they're targeting a year from now, but they're trying to work through all the permits and everything at this point in time. Um, we ended up. Having a joint meeting and we have, I let it Fontana Park. With the different counties involved. And we're following to see how the DOT issues their permits. Because one of the interesting aspects of this is they have a couple of ways of doing it, various types of equipment. But one of them actually has twenty-eight thousand pound axles on the trucks. And so that's a lot beyond what Iowa allows, they've got another truck that's lighter that would actually work. And they haven't issued their contracts yet, they're trying to get through all the permit process first. We're really following the lead from the DOT. And so we're saying, hey, if you're back on the rock roads, we got no real worries. Other than bridges again, because you're gonna have to cross bridges and. Like I said, we're following the lead for DOT, we, none of us, we all plan on using the same permit. When we get to that point for the different counties.
So I worked on a lot of these projects, uh, especially over Nebraska, so you might reach out to some of them, um. And see how they're handling their permits.
I've heard of the helium being found in Nebraska.
Yeah, and that's, that's the way that they described it was hydrogen, so. But uh, anyway, so they have an established process that maybe we could mimic as well, or.
Sure, sure, I've got good contacts there.
Yeah, I imagine.
Is this something that needs to be passed by resolution at some point in time?
No, it would just, it would generally be handled just through a permit through the individual offices. And like I said, we're all trying to handle it the same way to all the different counties involved.
When it comes to these seismic uh surveys. If folks notice it, they'll, they'll be very curious and.
Curious to what's going on.
I don't think alarms, but I think most of them will be very curious as to what's going on when they notice it, but we can talk about that.
It's kind of like a vibratory roller gun down the road where you can feel, you can't feel anything on these. And actually, we've done seismic tests already here in Buchanan County. And the results were extremely interesting to me and that was being done on D sixteen out of Bill Boulevard after we did the overlays.
So we have no, we have no say-so in this, it's gonna happen whether we want it to or not, or.
I think there'd be some legal, if we tried to tell them no, we would have some legal issues possibly. Uh, because again, here we are not stop, uh, not allowed to stop the heavy trucks.
And then working within the right of race.
Yeah, within the right ways, our permit system. And then you start getting back to, there's a whole bunch of laws and rules. Regarding utilities in the right of way and working within that way. So I, I don't have complete answers on that, Dawn. Is. Usually the issue. Is, u- usually the issues we get into is traffic control and such, when they say, hey, we've been all over Europe doing this. Yes, we're not, we're accustomed to handling traffic control issues inside each.
It's what they call, uh, and for good reason, they call it non-destructive testing, so. If you happen to notice what's going on, you'd be a little worried, but it's, it's not enough to make people worry. It's more about public information, making sure, like you said, the utilities are aware of fiber optic guy lines, especially, um, they know when it's happening and what's happening.
Yeah, they're probably a year away on all this, but they're trying to, trying to work through everything right now. And then we're also saying, hey, you're better off not doing it in the spring. Roads are soggy.
Soggy, yeah.
So this would be on both paved and non-paved?
On paved and non-paved, if they're doing it on the state system, which they obviously are, um, it's gonna be purely unpaved. And the roads in Clayton County are purely on the state system, not on the county system.
They're giving the roads in the same shape that they gave it to them.
Yes, yeah.
So if they, if they, it just seems like a lot of weight.
Yeah, that, that's overweight on the axles, so our answer is put more axles underneath your truck. And, or use a smaller truck, so they're still, they're working these details out yet, and that's why, that's where they're meeting this year.
Well, at this point, we run, we don't need to take any action other than let Brian continue pursuing the.
They're gonna pursue us.
Very good, thank you. Okay, Lisa, I'm sorry, now you're up. It's a creamer with the uh, Buchanan County Economic Development.
I'm just here to give you an update, um. On some things that we've been working on, some of the things that we have coming up. I know you guys know who we are, but uh, people in the audience might not be as aware. We are uh, Buchanan County Economic Development, we are a five oh one C four nonprofit organization. And our board is made up of uh, a very diverse board, of all the mayors of the county. As well as Dawn serves on our board for the Board of Supervisors. And we also have agriculture, tourism, utilities, manufacturing, and education represented on our, our board. So, and one thing about economic development, um, it is specifically mentioned as. Uh, in Iowa code for county support for economic development. Uh, what I've included in your packets, I already gave you one of these, but um, just providing you with this, I won't go through it again. It is our overview of twenty twenty-four. I don't believe I was able to get these to you yet. Um, these were just issued about three, four months ago, and they are the labor shed for the area. Um, it's Buchanan County later, labor shed, uh, basis of it is Independence as the center of the county. And the Cedar Valley Regional Partnership Labor Shed. Um, and that basically just talks about uh, the tr- the amount of uh, employees. Um, coming into the county, the amount going out, and the exact, and the amount employee availability. In a large labor shed area for uh, industries and businesses. Um, so what I'm gonna talk about here today mainly is I'm gonna kind of go through our update of what we've been working on this year. Um, I'll go ahead and skip ahead, this is upcoming. We do have our leadership program coming up, um, and you guys are aware of that, uh, that starts on September. Uh, ninth, um, and this has been a very popular program. Uh, we partner with Hawkeye Community College on it. Uh, with that partnership, um, participants then receive a uh, certificate for being part of this leadership program. It's a six-week program, half-day program, uh, because we have had, we've grown every year uh, with this. And at last year, we were pretty much at the breaking point of our facility. Um, we are lucky enough that uh, Pipestone generously donates their uh, uh, workshop area for us. Or their uh, meeting area for us to hold this, it works out perfectly. Um, and this year, we're going to see if we can do two programs, one morning and one afternoon. Um, that way, we can, instead of having twenty-seven participants, uh, which makes it a little more difficult to. Uh, be as quality as we want, um, we are limiting each one to twenty participants, and if we're able to do. Uh, a morning and an afternoon, that would be great, but we'll see how that goes as time, as time permits. So going back to uh, what we've been up to. Uh, we did uh, have uh, some of the state come in. Uh, Buchanan County has done um, several catalyst grants uh, within the county. And we've recently closed out the one that was in Independence, uh, that was with uh, Gedney Bakery. Um, and they're also working on some Upper Story uh, Airbnb or apartment concepts. Um, and though that will be finished out within the next few months, um, and also Fairbank. Uh, had a catalyst program, so the commu- for a catalyst program. Uh, the community actually applies uh, for the program on behalf of the building owner. Um, and then we worked, we've worked with each of these communities and building owners. Uh, to put this grant together for them, uh, and that they were accepted for. So the one in Fairbank, there is a picture of it on this, that's a completed picture. Um, it is currently open as the Farmer's Kitchen, uh, it. Uh, we just recently had um, some state people here, and they plan to highlight that Fairbank catalyst as. A perfect example of what to do within the state for a catalyst program. Um.
It says that one that used to be bank building.
Uh, it used to be, um, it sat at storage for about twenty years. Um, and used to be the Welsh's had a restaurant in it. Um, it's apart, across from City Hall, typically across from City Hall. Uh, so, yeah, so both of, both of the properties um, were vacant at the time, uh, before the catalyst application was made. So uh, it, it, that's what it is to do, it's to uh, bring in new business. Um, as well as refurbish and make uh, the property more appealing to a business. Uh, to, to be located in there. Uh, something that we just uh, worked on, we reached out to both of the rural grocery stores. There was a rural grocery store grant, um, Nick's Family Grocery chose to move forward with it. And they did receive a grant of up to twenty thousand dollars, and they plan to use that to expand. Uh, delivery service of their take and bake meals. So uh, a- and part of that is because of uh, their unique story and uh, receiving that grant. Um, we have been asked to be uh, one of the uh, part of the eight great ideas in the upcoming Iowa Downtown Conference. We'll be presenting on that, so excited, yep, we're excited to share, share our counties, um, and some of the things that we're doing here with that. Uh, we helped some other businesses with some boost applications that were received, uh, so those were other grants. Um, we did launch our Lead Buchanan Academy, uh, it's a leadership program, and it has a. It's a great leadership program, it just has a little bit different slant to it in the fact that. Um, the focus is on servant leadership, um, as well as we wanted to make people aware of what we have in the county. And opportunities there are, so we've talked about um, uh, the school districts, what they have available tourism. Uh, we talked about uh, civic leadership, um, volunteer opportunities, and we did actually have a couple of our participants. That uh, participated, one was at RagBri in Fairbank, and the other one actually got involved with. The development of RagBri in Lamont, and she uh, sent me a nice email just saying how Lead really helped her open up. And kind of step out of what she normally would do, and she, uh, it was a great opportunity. And she plans to continue working with her, with her uh, community with Lamont, so I'm excited about that. Uh, we have been working with the city of Jessup on downtown revitalization, they're moving forward with those ideas. Um, and we continue uh, our extensive work with uh, Buchanan County Tourism as well. Some of those things that we worked, um, we're excited, they received a First Impression Grant, which is basically. You can kind of term it as a secret shopper uh, uh, program where we have state. Uh, the state comes in and will book hotels and book Airbnbs and plan a. Uh, touring uh, Cedar Rock and uh, going to the Amish or doing something within. Uh, opportunities within Independence, we don't know that they're coming, they just do it. Um, and they come back and they kind of give us an idea of. Uh, and Liz is, we'll be talking about this much, much more extensively next, next week when she's here to report on tourism. But it's, it's a great opportunity that tourism got for, for the county to do. Uh, we've assisted with RagBri, uh, as well as some other, other events. Um. We are working with housing, we work with Habitat for Humanity, um, we are also just recently asked to be on a regional housing task force. Uh, that's being developed, um, and out of that, we are working to try to create a uh. A uh, workshop for busi- or for communities as far as opportunities for housing. So be, be a, uh, stay tuned for that. Um, we assisted and had the opportunity to work with RagBri communities as well. Um, uh, we were actually at RagBri in Fairbank. Um, I unfortunately wasn't able to go to the others, my daughter had a, an event that we couldn't miss, so I missed out on. Uh, Saturday, but I've heard that it went very well, so glad to hear that. Uh, we were also part of a site selector visit with the Cedar Valley Regional Partnership. Um, our regional partnership is very valuable to us in the fact that, um, one, we do our Cedar Valley Regional Labor Shed. Um, as well as we do a uh, a uh. We do a survey for businesses and industries, um, and it's a late uh, cost, labor cost, and. Um, to find out what it is, what's the major, what's the main um, amount that people are paying throughout the region. It has been very valuable for our industries to be able to kind of tap into that, to make sure that they're keeping up. With what the cost for labor is, um, that they're paying what they should be, that their benefits are what they should be. If they need to increase them, um, that type of thing, so we've done that the last couple of years, and we'll be doing that again this year. Um, with our regional partners, the site selector visit, opportunity to uh, go out within our. And promote our region, uh, economic develop- Buchanan County Economic Development alone would not be able to do that. Uh, they barely know us as the Cedar Valley Region, when we go to Chicago, Atlanta, whatever. Site selectors looking at um, possibilities of uh, bringing in industries to the area. So it's been really, it was a really great opportunity for us to be part of that group. Um, another thing that our Cedar Valley Regional Partners are working on and should hopefully be completed soon. They did uh, some interviews throughout the county, um, they're putting together a thirty-second spot about Buchanan County. Why are you here? Why did you decide to move back? Why are you here? Um, what drew you to the county, um, and that will be on the Live the Valley uh, site. As well as we'll be taking that and putting that on our website. Um, uh, I was appointed to the Iowa Rural Development Council, which is a very great opportunity for us to promote our organization. As well as Buchanan County uh, throughout the state. Um, also, we have done several RLFs already this year, uh, very excited about that. We did for the Farmer's Kitchen in Fairbank, and that went, that is the restaurant that went into the Catalyst Building. In Fairbank, and then Rivers Palace Holdings, uh, that is that uh, Gedney Group. Uh, that is for the Upper Story and those uh, Airbnb opportunities. Normally, we wouldn't do like a, you wanna house, you need a loan, we're not, that's not what our focus is. Our focus is, um, we see that the state is really pushing and supporting downtown development. They're supporting Upper Story housing opportunities, and they're supporting and pushing uh, tourism. And this really fit all of those things, um, so, and then that tourism. Uh, portion of bringing, opening up Airbnbs and bringing in more tax money that way as well.
These are pretty significant checklists that has to qualify for the revolving loan fund.
Yes, we do have that available on our website, um, that anybody can go on and look and see what it is, and. Um, and evaluate if that's something that they would. Would qualify for, and we also have a committee that meets, this is a committee decision. Um, the committee then takes it to the full Board of Supervi- Board of Economic Development, and then the full board votes yea or nay. On if they should receive the um, our revolving loan fund. We did also approve a key business grant for SIPs in Lamont, so a lot of you guys are veil- are aware of uh, Twisted Energy here in Independence. Um, SIPs is from the same owners, uh, they actually live in Lamont. Uh, it's an opportunity to bring a unique business to that community, even though we do have several within, within the county. It's something that Lamont is very excited about having. So, once again, the key business grant, um, that is available as far as what the qualifications are. Um, online on our website. Uh, we did, so far, we've had a grant writing workshop, shop, a time management workshop, and AI training for small business webinar. Um, and we have several upcoming. Uh, just last week, uh, we were able to host State Economic Development Director Debbie Durham. As she came to tour the Buchanan County Catalyst Program, so that was very exciting to have, have her and be able to show off. Um, what we've done with, what uh, our county has done and what we're capable of doing. Um, upcoming, I talked about business leadership, we do also have a new uh, Lunch and Learn, it's gonna be September second. Uh, Celine Apearman will be on goal setting. Um, Molly Mackey, uh, Beat Burnout on October eighth. Um, we will be closing out our Lead Buchanan, our last meeting will be uh, this month. Um, at the hospital. And then we will have kind of a cum- cum- cumulative meeting after that. Um, and we are in the process of getting ready to relaunch our website with a new block.
Yeah.
That's a lot, Lisa.
Wow, good for you.
Got a great group. Great, any other questions or? Thank you very much.
I pushed out the Lunch and Learn and the Lead Program.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Okay. A little longer than normal, but that's okay. Uh, at that point, that completes our agenda, we'll go to public comments. Please uh, announce your name and your address and try and hold everything to. You're nuts.
Buchanan at the road, Brandon's, I, I want to commend the board for two things, two decisions you made today. One was following the recommendations of Mike Galloway, Mollars and Trudy Lawburn. This stuff need to be said, need to be put in black and white, and needs to be under, and hopefully it will be followed. The other thing, probably the most important decision you've made as a Board of Supervisors, as a group, is the Employee Assistance Program. The team building has not been there, and if you've been to these meetings, you've noticed. Uh, the black cloud over the Board of Supervisors in these meetings has been not good. Um, so that may be the best decision you've made. Now, keep in mind, that's a good start, alright? That is a good start, but you must keep in mind, an open mind, that more training is probably gonna be needed for the three of you as a group. Again, I commend you for your decision today, and those two things, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Oh. Julie, you're new comes.
Hey, yeah, um, I just, actually, I'll tell us, I'm with the area. Um, regarding Brian's question, I'm also here um, for the Buchanan County Soil and Water Conservation District, because we haven't been. Communicating like we're supposed to, and uh, so when you brought up that on those founding tests and that type of thing. Is it affecting any agriculture? agriculture ground whatsoever?
They're purely within the road right of ways, and they can work off the shoulders is what they're told. Now, the day would come if they actually started grilling, that would be a whole different world, and then mineral rights come involved, and.
Well, that would be very important that we work together, because of the compaction of that amount of equipment on, um, agriculture.
When they, yeah, and they get, that would be much more like your wind power generators and everything at that point in time.
So, it's a, so I'm also here for, um, I am going to say this much, is that I have been following you on YouTube, and I'm glad I'm angry with, I'm right here, sorry, forgot your name already, but, anyway, but it is key to work as a team. And no behind the scenes, I've been through mediation in my job, and I have been treated like dog crap in my job. So it is very important that we treat others the way we want to be treated. Very important, because when you have a team that is trying to be successful for the county, we cannot have this fat stabbing type thing, throwing under the bus type thing, and I remind you guys from going to back, to participate in those sessions, I hear them participate. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Bonnie, I think you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
Bonnie, you're been random. Keith, when you were running for office, I posted a few times on your Facebook page, and you obviously didn't agree with me sometimes, so you blocked me twice, once you deleted all my comments. I told your follower that I wasn't a real person, my profile was fake, I didn't really exist, I was an imposter, even though we had met several times and you knew exactly who I was. Fast forward to the brand-new Informed Citizens of Buchanan County page, the page where the moderators refused to share their identities. On there, you have two posters, Taylor Morris and Joliet Johnson. Taylor Morris suggested someone came to the last VOS meeting drunk, but he didn't name anyone in particular, Joliet Johnson, however, did. He named John Kurtz, or to be more specific, Diana Kurtz's husband. Though I've never met him, I suspect Taylor Morris is real, Joliet Johnson, however, is not. In at least one of his posts, he admitted to using fake identities on social media so he could remain anonymous. These people are called trolls, that alone is against Facebook's community standards, and it is enough to get people kicked off, including the page itself. But what's really interesting to me is the fact that I was kicked off your page when you knew for a fact that I was real and hiding nothing. Joliet Johnson is a known and admitted impostor, an impostor who falsely defamed a fellow board member. When Diana and I pointed out these facts, and Diana requested that the defamatory post be removed, we were met with informed citizens' usual juvenile answers tailored to illicit guffaws and chuckles from the followers. But suddenly, Joliet and his posts were removed, and at first, I thought that someone was finally thinking rationally. Unfortunately, I was proven wrong, and his post suddenly returned with one glaring exception, the post where he admitted to using a false identity had been deleted. Is informed citizens covering for this impostor to keep an unjustifiable rumor afloat? Through all of this, your silence is deafening, and through your silence, you are justifying the actions of an impostor in a social media page that has helped foster the defamation upon your colleagues. It's quite the double standard, and I hope the people of Buchanan County are beginning to understand.
Uh, yeah, I apologize to you before for removing you, uh, on Facebook and removing your post.
You're right, I did that.
You did apologize.
Yeah, and at that point, the evaluation process that I used, that you had six friends, and I apologize that I didn't remember your name, if I had remembered your very obvious name now, I obviously wouldn't have done that, so I'd certainly apologize.
Is that you did not stand up for a colleague that was knowingly defamed by a knowing impostor.
Okay, uh, did Dawn do stand up for that person either?
Dawn doesn't pay attention to Facebook anymore.
Yeah, why?
Yeah, um, I suspect that somewhere, and I don't have any proof of this, I'll put that right out there, but I suspect that somewhere your voters are in that, that webpage because they were, that Facebook page, because it just suddenly showed up, and it is very troll, if we want. And I think that, you know, and especially when we're talking about having a better relationship with your colleagues, that you sit right next to John, do you think he was drunk that day?
What's that?
You couldn't say?
Thank you, Bonnie, your answer up. Can I have the next person, please? Any else? Yes?
Sharon Scher's, um, eight oh six Third Avenue, one of these two, I just have a quick question, um, can I ask Lisa a question? You said something about B and B, did I, Airbnb, some of their independence?
Yeah, up above where we get, yes.
Okay, and is there apartments going up above, like Ace Hardwood and those?
Yeah, those are already completed, hopefully as soon as that toll here is done, they will be over there, ten.
Awesome, thank you, that's all I wanted.
I do want to say something, I need to clear the air from what Bonnie had said, and to segue off of that, I have served with John for two and a half, three years now, and I have never seen him drunk, and I've never seen him show up drunk or with alcohol in his breakfast eating, so I do want to throw that out there and clarify it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? If not, I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Second, favor, thank you, everybody.